Is now in order. The clerk will give the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
Almighty God, and thy beloved people, thy holy city, thy spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that may they please serve their offices to the glory of thy people.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we do get started, I just wanted to let everybody know, due to the absences, I will be chairing this meeting tonight, obviously. And due to my visual limitations, tonight, when people are raising their hands to speak, the city clerk will be calling on you. So just to let everybody know how the process will work tonight and go forward. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Dockett, Rivet, Burney?
Yes.
Brunner?
Here's.
Hilliker?
Gerard?
President.
Mitzvahski?
Yes.
Adams?
Here.
Morris?
Madam Mayor.
I have heard from Madam Mayor, I have heard from Commissioner Dockett, Rivet, Hilliker, and Commissioner Morris. Commissioner Morris will be tarded this evening. We have a very short agenda, so hopefully he can show up before we complete tonight. Do we have a, do we have a motion to excuse everyone this evening?
Motion to excuse everybody that's not here.
That would be Commissioner Hilliker, Commissioner Dockett, Commissioner Rivet, Madam Mayor, and Commissioner Morris, correct?
That's correct.
Do we have a second?
Commissioner Mitzvahski?
Second.
Okay, they are excused. The first item on tonight's agenda is presentations and proclamations, which we have none. So we will go ahead and move directly into adopting the agenda. Do any commissioners have anything to add to this evening's agenda? At this point in time, we see no one with their hands up. Do we have, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Commissioner Clemens?
Move to approve. Do we have a motion to approve agenda? Do we have a second?
Commissioner Gerard?
Second. Okay, and so it has been, it will be on. Okay, clerk will call roll.
Commissioner Burney?
Yes.
Brunner?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Mitzvahski?
Yes.
Clemens?
Yes.
I guess.
All right, the, the agenda has been adopted for this evening. Now, we will, next order of business is the consent agenda. Do any commissioners wish to make a change to tonight's consent agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to public input for the consent agenda. If anybody, if anybody would like to, if anybody in the public would like to make a change to tonight's consent agenda, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, sign the registration book, and please let us know which item we would like removed from tonight's consent agenda to be put on the regular agenda. Seeing none, we will be moving forward. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Commissioner Clemens?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Commissioner Gerard?
Second.
And Madam, Madam Clerk, will you please call roll?
Commissioner Brunner?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Mitzvahski?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Yes.
I guess.
All items on the consent agenda have been approved. We'll now move on to comments from the commissioner and the mayor. Obviously, the mayor is not here this evening. Do any commissioners have anything that they would like to speak about this evening? Commissioner Gerard?
Yes, thank you. Just a few comments. There was an incident, and I had to go out in person. And a resident reached out to me just concerning when we do issue statements on incident. I know we had to have that team come out, and they responded, and they did their thing. And it turned out it was a boiler that malfunctioned. I think they were just concerned about, so if we, if there was an incident where there was a chemical issue, and people need to be evacuated, how, how do we issue, in the timeframe of that, when would we issue that statement to, like, residents in that area? That, that was kind of their question, concern. Because an officer told the gentleman there was no chemicals that were, that would cause problems, and then we had all the hazmat folks, and then I think our statement didn't say there was chemicals potentially on site that we're concerned about. So it's just a question of process.
Keep up, it's gonna come up and explain the process.
There we go.
So, a lot of factors to consider in an incident like that. Versum is a pretty large facility inside. They do their best to segregate where these boilers are compared to where the chemicals are. We had hazmat teams on site, just basically a worst-case scenario. We looked at the wind direction that was there that particular day, where the location of the boiler was compared to where the chemicals were. We felt that even if there were an explosion or anything of that nature, it would take a while to get to the chemical area of the, hopefully we would stop it before then. We just had people there as an extra precaution. The wind was blowing towards the burner that day, which was kind of another factor to be considered, that we'd have a little more time to give people warning. If they did come to an evacuation, we would send out the order, the central dispatch, and then we would also go to the door.
Correct. That's, that's, that's just what I was kind of looking forward to seeing, that we give people enough warning that something were happening. So that's all I can respond back to that, resident. Thank you.
Go ahead.
One other one. A resident had concerns about quite a few lights along the rail trail system from, and they said he marked them with yellow tape from H two O's to the one, there were like six tiers. I don't, I don't remember seeing, because I usually run that route, I don't remember seeing that many out there. Apparently, there's quite a few lights out along that trail there. And then the last thing I had, you know, I get a lot of questions in Uptown. And I don't, have we handled, like, a follow-up? It's been, like, eleven years now since, you know, things have gone, like, gotten the status of Uptown as far as, like, I think there's, people don't understand the taxes, how we collect taxes through Uptown. And have we done a presentation on the whole economics of Uptown?
We did it years and years ago, when it all first started, but we haven't done one recently. So are you looking for something?
I just wondered if we could have some, I mean, there's new developments still happening, and I think there's a feeling that what happens in Uptown, I mean, it's in the Third Ward, and it's been a great addition, Third Ward and growth there, but how's it impact the other neighborhoods? And I think people think that because of what's happening in Uptown, it takes away from the neighborhoods, and, you know, I think it would be interesting.
We can do that.
So we can have enough data, what that really means to the.
We can do that. Are you looking for something just from city staff, or did you want something from Uptown as well?
I think city staff, as far as, like, revenue sources collected versus what is expended, so.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Burney?
Thank you. I have something that I wrote to the commission and city manager, they, I wanted to just remind you, what I wanted to do was just leave an email, so I want everyone to know and to remind you what I asked for, and so you wouldn't forget, because you can write back to me. I wrote, "Since February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, I have asked to have head community development department, Deb Akizel, to come to the chambers to give a presentation. I have yet to have my request resolved. I have come to the conclusion this is called interference with obtained information. Any violation of this provision stated in the charter rules shall be addressed as a misdemeanor, and any commissioner or mayor shall forfeit their seat if convicted. Also, I would like Mr. Martini to give a presentation, and I had my statement of the accounting of the C E B G monies spent for the year starting January third, twenty twenty-three until now, to be at the chambers, November sixth, twenty twenty-three meeting. I would also like to have a attorney to come to the chambers on November sixth, twenty twenty-three, to answer questions for community information. Being taxpayers, they have the right to know where their tax dollars are being spent and why. I also have questions being a part of a whole commission. The attorneys are at the pleasure of our commission and our chief advisor. Answers to questions need to be explained how their services are applied and utilized. Thank you."
Second, Commissioner?
Yes, thank you.
All right.
Commissioner Mitzvahski?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a small announcement about the Bay City and Bloom Garden Club and their improvements to the Cancer Memorial Arboretum and within that part. They have launched a crowdfunding campaign through patroncity.com. This, the first phase of the redevelopment is going to encompass a new observation area, four block benches, planting improvements to the general area along the water. The sketches are absolutely beautiful. And I just wanted to share that this first phase is three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. The crowdfunding, they're looking for fifty thousand. Several citizens have started to donate, and if you can't donate through the website, patroncity.com. I did talk to Jerry Simalski last week, and they are also accepting checks to the Garden Club.
Second, Commissioner?
Yes.
I do have a couple of things to set go over this evening. Obviously, fall is upon us, and I wanted to remind everyone that if you are going to be breaking up your leaves, please do not break them into the street. We do have street sweepers that do go through and clean the street, but if, if everybody swept their leaves into the street, it will go ahead and start clogging up the storm drains, as well as it will make the street sweeper process go much, much slower. And there are, I would like to remind everybody, there are city ordinances against doing just that. So please make sure you're bagging those leaves, so our air waste, air waste department can handle that. Thank you very much. Is everybody else all set? That being said, we will move on to the city manager's report. Ms. Muscat, do you have anything to report this evening?
I do, I just have one. I, I just wanted to report on our neighborhood cleanup that we had in the area of Madison, Tempe, Farragut, and Columbus. We had over a hundred and twenty volunteers over those three days, so it was very well represented. We had city of Bay City folks and Habitat for Humanity, there's a whole list, AT&T and Vow, they sent volunteers. What they did accomplish is brush and debris removal, they did yard cleanup, alley cleanup, and porch repair. We'll put something in the memo as well that explains how many tons of effuse that we took away, and building material, tires, there was just a whole bunch of stuff that was helped out with the neighborhood. So I'm very happy that our community development department put this together. Since I'm under the city, I completed only three in that area, so it was, it was good that we got back in and were able to help some of our residents.
All set?
All set.
All right, perfect. Yes, I, I also, I feel that that is a huge asset to this community, and I'm glad that we're able to do that, and I hope that we continue that through, for many, many years. And our next order of business is public input. This is the chance for anybody who's in our audience, please come to the podium, speak to and address the commission in regards to items on the agenda, or any other, anything else that they wish to speak about. You will have five minutes, and Commissioner Clemens will be the timekeeper. Please remember to state your name and address for the record and sign our registration.
Good evening, and sunny for a zero dot hour. Just a miscellaneous, I mentioned there were, let's see, two events in one holiday between last commission and this commission. So just wanted to show a little bit of awareness. The first and foremost of them, I might list anyway, they're no particular chronological order, is world mental health day. Mental health is obviously important. It is health, right? You have a symbiotic relationship between mental health and physical health, and that's why your brain is part of your body. So I could harp on about that all day, just wanted to show some, like, two facts. The second on my list is coming out day. So LGBTQ population is at a high risk for things like homelessness, substance use, suicide risk, and the more supportive communities and families are of them, and they're coming out process, the more of those things decrease, right? So I just wanted to highlight that real quick, show some light on the topic. The third is the one that I heard on, oh, for a minute, so bear with me here. We had Indigenous People's Day a week ago, perhaps if there were that word sinking, it was the Public Columbus Day. It's not historically inaccurate to say that Christopher Columbus was a person, that kind of stretch of the imagination, or one of the facts, like the fact that he brought his slave trade to what was Hispaniola by the time, it's now called the Dominican Republic. He brought S T Bs to the New World, like, things were coming here far before he did. And finally, you can't discover a place that already has been had its presence. That being said, I often wonder why we still have a street mandate after somebody who has a pretty notorious reputation as being a murderous, rapist, commonizer. So aside from, you know, apologist bologna, it's always been that way, I really don't know why we have a street mandate after him. And I understand that many people like myself came from an education system that sometimes sounded a lot like one mythology, where people that look like me were deemed to be heroes that are rescuing savages from their ways of life. Now that we know better, we have to do better, and I think it would lead the city to maybe metaspirit something else. Perhaps you could pay homage to the original inhabitants of land called the Sauk Island or Chippewa Island, perhaps a completely different direction, called the Adama. I would contend that just about any name can be dubbed on the world, but not Christopher Columbus, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like, wish to come up and report?
Alex, what did you hear, and I saw Terry. I should have adjusted that list. We have a very ideal chief in Roosevelt Park, Golden Markichella. That'd be a great hometown connection, too. And now for the thing I come up here to talk about visually, because sometimes great ideas get sparring, or sit down, and I, at the last meeting, I got a threatening email from somebody in this chamber, and I will have visual of that, they're responding, and I thought they were, I'm actually looking at this time. But I do want to say that this is not the first time something's happened inside the city commission. So, one thing, for the United States, sue me, stating a basic fact, that was not rescinded. A different commissioner did reply to me, saying that they felt they gave the error and was apologized for it. This commission did not. Second point is for during COVID meetings, I, I, it was found like that they were disgruntled, that somebody was speaking out during the COVID segment. It was really difficult, a lot of people in this house, to speak out during the public segments. Third point is the general attitude, but, you know, we're going to go in something a little different here. The resident from the chamber, and I, during, I think it was late twenty twenty-one, after we got back from COVID, claiming that this commissioner swears on the phone. Fourth one, could go back to when, um, six word race last time, and this is just a thought, not a act of hesitation, but the same kind of activity, sending out a letter to my employer trying to get me to be fired because of my company. So, and fourth one, I cannot blame this commissioner, but it is the time that I, I thought of their actual process of employee. So, four examples, who are nervous people of other people in the chamber and who are come here, tried to compliment us in, we had this, we, I'm completely okay with this speech, but it's a pretty illegal action, just because I wanted to say something, and what I said was a quote. It's just ridiculous. I came into the cooktop, I was still asleep, I, actually, last thing, it is Monday, I am asked to abstain, and the direction I got from the person who was at the desk said, "Well, we have to deal with these after the minutes published." There are cities who have every meeting on their record, going back from they created a YouTube, most of them created YouTube after they got up and I, still on their YouTube route. We don't have, because we had to slip up in this chamber, basically, that, again, something I called up, and I get that one. This is just more examples of how people don't want to get involved, they're scared to, and they shouldn't. We should be working together on things that grows. But when people get slapped down at their first complaint, that's not trying to be a laugh, so, come on, we can't do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak with the commissioner? Let the record state that Commissioner Morris has shown, here's a, a record signal.
Andrew Tepco, six ten sixteen street. Burn the patch. They stayed there a long time. Marks, disrespect for the road commission's good work. My immigrant kids just out to raise, you know, looking to have fun. Car burnouts, van burnouts, truck burnouts, motorcycle burnouts, burn a patch. This activity is like the political philosophies, the political warfare we have to live with today. It wins the matchup back for burn the patch. The marks, deep black trenches, some up to twelve, which is wide, they do not disappear. Disrespect for the road commission's good work. Burn patches. Let's quit burning patches. They stay there a long time. Andrew Tepco. We can always do better. That's actually a famous quote from Don Meyer. Don Meyer coached Northern State University, Aberdeen, South Dakota. He's also known for these following quotes, too. Reputation is what people think you are. Character defines who you really are. Child praise and whispered criticism. Successful programs consist of people working hard, working together, while never worried about who gets credit. What you accept in victory, you must accept in defeat. Be who you are every day. Everybody cares about you. In every situation is an opportunity to grow. We can always do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the commission this evening? Seeing none, we're back in regular order. Our next, uh, next order of business is public hearings, and we do have one this evening. Do we have a motion for public hearing number one?
Commissioner Gerard?
Motion to have public hearing number one, the creation of obsolete property rehabilitation district and application for obsolete property rehabilitation certificate for two oh six fifth street.
Do we have a second?
Commissioner Morris?
Second.
Thank you very much. Uh, this is, this is now time for, the time for public to come up and speak on public hearing number one. Under the rules of the city commission, you will have five minutes to speak, and Commissioner Clemens will be the timekeeper. Seeing none, we will go ahead and move forward. Next order of business is special orders, and we do have two this evening. Madam Clerk, would you please read those, the orders?
Special order number one, commission has a whole resolution regarding application from Bay City U seven O L C for the creation of an obsolete property rehabilitation district located at two oh six fifth street, recommendation approved.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Commissioner Mitzvahski?
Motion to approve special order number one.
Do we have a second?
Commissioner Morris?
Second. The item has passed. Oh, do we have any discussion?
Commissioner Burney?
What I want to do is your mic, please. Um, is, are you talking about the obsolete property at two oh seven?
Or two oh six fifth street, this is for the district.
Okay, so is that the one, the obsolete property, that you're talking about giving the six hundred thousand to?
There's two parts, yes, this is the district.
So what I was wondering, where's the six hundred thousand dollars coming from?
Commissioner, we are not giving them six hundred thousand, they're investing six hundred thousand.
Oh, okay, that's what I wanted to know. Um, one other question, are, um, who was this person that, are we giving him a, a tax abatement, or are we doing that?
There is, there is tax, okay, but, yes, we are giving them a cut on their taxes, yes.
We're giving them.
That they're giving for this project.
Okay, now, my big question is, are they getting less taxes than the smaller businesses that are outside of the Uptown area? Does Uptown pay less taxes than the smaller businesses?
I guess I, I can't answer that unless I look up everybody's taxes.
Okay? What I'm saying, do the businesses uptown get more tax cuts than the small businesses across town? Like, the small businesses in the Columbus area, the Locky F area, um, you know, all the smaller businesses, is what I'm saying.
Commissioner, taxes can actually vary on the property value, the improvements on the property, things of that nature. So in this case, the company has invested six hundred thousand dollars, so they will still be paying taxes, but the increase of the tax base will be, will be waived until a certain point.
Okay, no disrespect to you, um, uh, Vice President Brunner, but I'm talking to the city manager. Clemens right here is the, the keeper, the, um, you know, I'm talking to her, to the city manager, I would like her to answer that question early, please. I may ask, because you, you do all the city managing thing, and you do the money, I may ask you, does Uptown get tax cuts more than the small businesses around town? Do they pay less taxes than we do in the small businesses? That's all I want to know.
No, they do not, and, no, they don't.
Okay, um, is there any way that you can get proof of that and get that to, um, me? Um, I'd like to see that.
Okay, what's that?
When I read about it, I see a lot of tax abamments, I see a lot of, um, I see Uptown, because of the Brownsfield project, I, I just want to understand that, because I see the Uptown businesses, the development, I see that they pay less taxes, they get more tax, um, cut, or more tax, uh, how can I put it? They pay less tax on this new Brownsfield project, on the, on the new, um, businesses that they're bringing there. They pay less on their businesses than, so if it's not true, I would like proof of that, could you?
So what, what do you want, and what do you want for proof? Because there's a lot of buildings in Uptown, a lot of properties, so what, what specifically do you want?
I, 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 I want to understand, and I want the community to understand, so if we can get someone to, um, is it Mr. Martini or someone?
I, I want that he give a presentation. I think we could wrap it into the presentation that Commissioner Gerard asked for, because that's how we'll explain it at that.
Okay.
Second, Commissioner?
As I am, thank you.
Do we have anybody else?
Commissioner Clemens?
Yes, thank you. Um, just on the topic of town.
Yes, thank you, um, just on the topic of taxes, the taxes are all public record on the big county, um, GIS. Any address and find those taxes?
Um, Commissioner, can I, Commissioner Clemens?
You can talk to me after the meeting.
No, I don't.
Commissioner Brereton, you don't have the floor right now.
Excuse me, you.
Commissioner Brereton.
Commissioner Brereton, you do not have the floor right now.
You are not supposed to have anything to say in city, nothing.
Commissioner Brereton, I am chairing this meeting. Commissioner Brereton, I am chairing this meeting, Commissioner Clemens has the floor, he was making a statement.
Well, you need to put her in check, because she never says anything until she.
Miss, this is, you're out of order, we please stop, you're out of order. This is the time, you can ask me questions after the meeting, now is not the time for a two-way discussion. That's all I've got. Is there any more discussion on this?
Yes, yes, I'm, I'm under attack by all.
Commissioner Brereton, you are not under attack by anybody. The city clerk is assisting me this evening because I am not able to see people out in, out on the floor. That's why she is trying to assist me, and she is correct in saying you did not, you did not have the floor, Commissioner Clemens did have the floor. So you are not being attacked, you are just being corrected, that's all. Is there any more discussion on the, on special order number one? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gerard.
Yes.
Kestas.
Yes.
Clemens.
Yes.
Morse.
Yes.
Brereton.
No.
Brunner.
Yes.
I guess.
All right, let's move on to special order number two. Madam Clerk, will you please read special order number two?
Special order two, commission as a whole resolution regarding application for Bay City U7 LLC for an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate located at 206 Fifth Street, recommendation approved.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Commissioner Gerard.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Commissioner Morse.
Second. Do we have any discussion?
Sure.
I'm willing to call the question. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Kestas.
Yes.
Clemens.
Yes.
Morse.
Yes.
Brereton.
No.
Brunner.
Yes.
Brereton.
Yes.
I guess. One of them.
Madam Clerk, does that complete our agenda this evening?
Yes, it does.
All right, this, this evening's meeting is adjourned.